Okay, it's seven o'clock. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? And also for the record, note that Councilmember Edgerton is participating remotely from a different location, a different county, actually.
Yes, I will. Councilmember August. Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Here.
Councilmember Edgerton.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
I will note for the record that Councilmember Edgerton is participating telephonically in this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pastor Jeff Johnson from Calvary Hills Church will deliver the words of inspiration, sir.
Well, good evening. Happy New Year. Is this your guys' first meeting for the new year?
It is.
Oh, well, I'm privileged to be here. First of all, I just wanted to congratulate you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for your election or your reelection. Well deserved, and I am very excited. You know, I just wanted to quickly just share as someone in this city who is not only a homeowner but a property owner and a business owner that I am thrilled with the direction of our city, and I am excited for what the future holds. You guys are doing a great job, so I am excited to be a part of this city and privileged to be here tonight, so. In saying that, I would love to pray for you guys and just ask for direction, for wisdom, for you as our leaders and for our city. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, God, we do just thank you for this city and, God, what you have done in our midst. We pray for the residents of Menifee, California. God, that you would protect and provide. Lord, that you would just see over this city as only you can. Lord, we do pray for the business owners of this city, that they would, God, just experience great prosperity and that it would continue to just grow and be all that it can be. Lord, tonight, we just pray for the leaders of this city, that, God, you would just give them supernatural wisdom, discernment. Lord, that they would truly make the decisions that not only reflect, God, what's on their mind and on their hearts, but what the desires of the people of this city truly need and desire as well, Lord. So, we pray for your protection, for your provision, for your wisdom, and for your discernment in this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. Ladies, would you please join me in honoring the nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. [inaudible] Is that you?
That's Grant. Every time.
Grant gave the "who" up. Okay, we have no presentations this evening. Are there any modifications to the meeting minutes from December 17th? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir. The agenda stands as posted.
Thank you very much. Onto our public comment period. Would you please call the first public speaker?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'll start off tonight by saying I think Menifee 24-7 should get their facts right before they print things because it seems they said that Tom Furman also attended a meeting via phone, which is not accurate, per Mr. Furman, not just per me. Scott, I'm going to comment to you again tonight. You stood here with your hand on the Bible and said what a godly man you are. I called you on it as your wife sat in the audience and snickered. Once again, I will say, a godly man does not lie. You have lied to the public from day one about the issue with contaminated soil, and you continue to lie, as does everybody on this panel. We have projects built on this soil, and now we have a project being challenged, but for the wrong reasons. I believe the challenge is from a developer that is a friend of the city, and it would hurt their land if this project moves forward. And the reason it should be challenged is, was there proper soil testing? And where are the results? Was this testing done by the same company that approves everything in this city? Are there kickbacks to this company? That should be investigated. Taxpayers should all want to know and want an accounting of where their money goes, and it should not be spent on hundred thousand dollar trees, not just once, but twice.
Thank you, Ms. Munir. Next speaker.
Phoebe Irie. I'm Phoebe Irie, and I just wanted to stop and thank the city for coming to our rescue when we had a problem at our community. I live in Country Gardens, and when the floods came, the mud came off of that hill and came clear down around and was just a horrible mess, and we didn't know what to do. So, I called the city, and they came and cleaned it up the best anybody could. I guess we were a little surprised then when we were threatened with thousands of dollars if we didn't get it changed. The hill changed somewhat within 24 hours, but we weren't sure we could do it, but we managed. And so, you've managed to get what you needed done, and you took care of us, so thank you.
Thanks, Phoebe. Thank you, city engineer and your team, for that. Next speaker, please.
Sir, that is all the speakers on public comment.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember reports on committee activities. Mr. August.
I'd just like to report out that for Mr. Edgerton, I attended the RTA meeting in Riverside on the 18th. Not much happened. It was my first time up there. It was a big auditorium. Everything's done electorally, voted buttons in front of you like that. So, basically, what we did is we approved the end-of-the-year financial report, and we voted for some people, and I can tell you that I was afraid to push the abstain button at the time, so I hope I voted for the right people up there, and I enjoyed attending that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. August. Mr. Denver?
At the WRCOG meeting, we had a very long presentation having to do with a program that I think that Menifee folk know about, but it's called the HERO Program. And the HERO Program is an opportunity where you can put solar on your home, and you can do repairs to your home that have to do with double-pane windows and air that comes underneath your doors, things like that, insulation, things that are basic. And you don't have to pay anything down. You can put it on your tax bill, and then you can pay it over a number of years. It's all done privately. There's no government money involved. However, WRCOG does get involved in it. It's really a good program, and it would, at least in my home, it saved me from an average of $175 a month bill, 250 some months, 100 some months. Anyway, now I pay $50 a month. And that's the kind of thing that your government is doing for you, is allowing you to do that and put it on your tax bill without any down payment into it at all. So, I recommend we all consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Mr. Lees Meyer, do you have any report tonight?
No, sir, I do not.
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you. Back on the 29th of December, we had an opportunity, normally, as we prepare for a meeting, the mayor or the mayor pro tem and the city manager and the city clerk sit down and review the agenda and make sure that it's all what we say we want it to have for the next meeting. But, well, we had Mr. August and I and Mr. Denver participated in an opportunity to recognize a young man in our community who went through some health issues, and we made him an honorary mayor on December 29th, and it was a marvelous, marvelous thing. And it was an honor and privilege to be able to have him in our chamber, Ian Castarina, and his family once again, and honoring him for being just the trooper that he is and surviving those challenges. And I just wanted to share with the public that those things are the things that we like to do up here. So, I wanted to share that and congratulate the first honorary mayor, Ian Castarina, of the city of Menifee from December 29th, 2014. Yesterday morning, I had an opportunity to attend the swearing-in ceremony for Supervisor Ashley Benoit and Tavalloni at the County Admin Building, as well as County Assessor Paul Angula and the treasurer, who just got sworn back in. And I also want to thank staff and my colleagues and those, there's a couple in the audience who, I thank you for your well wishes on my surgery from December 8th, and it was a quick recovery, and I'm back in the saddle. And we wish Mr. Edgerton his quick recovery and back to his duties here in the chamber and not have to join us from afar. So, with that, are there any other comments from the council members before we go on the balance of our agenda? Hearing none, we have the consent calendar before us. May I have a motion on the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Seconded by Mr. August. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Mr. Edgerton, we are going to be voting on the consent calendar. I want to make sure that you are able to hear me properly.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. On the consent calendar approval, Councilmember August. Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Onto public hearings tonight. We have two public hearings on the agenda, the first being a public hearing for Quimby fees, Agenda Item 11.1. Mr. Johnson, do you have a staff report?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Robert Lennox, your Community Services Director, will have the balance of the item.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council members. As the city manager mentioned, I'll be presenting this item, try to give you a brief overview and an update of what has taken place so far, and also a summary of what the fees, proposed fees, are as incorporated in both the resolutions presented this evening. So, background is that on December 17th, City Council did hear a second reading and then eventual adoption of both Quimby Fee Ordinance Number 2014-160 and also the Mitigation Fee Act Ordinance Number 2000, sorry, 2014-161. As you'll recall, both essentially have a requirement of dedication and improvement of land or payment of fees, or both, by developers for park and recreation purposes within the city of Menifee. What you're considering this evening is somewhat of a cleanup in that it is a resolution that authorizes the city to collect the fees as identified in those ordinances and eventually adopted into the Menifee Municipal Code. Those ordinances, as I mentioned, and this might look familiar from the last meeting, Quimby establishes a land dedication requirement, first changing it from three to five acres per thousand, as I mentioned before, and also establishes an INLU payment fee per dwelling unit that's proportional to the fair market value of land acquisition cost per acre. Conversely, mitigation establishes a fee per dwelling unit that's proportional to land acquisition cost per acre. However, that value is used despite fees that could be applied to park improvement, not simply just acquisitions. So, there's one of the distinctions between the two. In essence, though, mitigation is no longer going to be seen as a flat fee as part of the park development impact fees. So, these formulas that are listed in your staff report and on the screen now should be familiar. We reviewed these both at the first reading and the second reading of both of those ordinances. A formula is the calculation of numbers of acres to be dedicated. B formula is the Quimby Fee, which essentially is a mirror image of what the mitigation fee is. As I mentioned in the prior slide, though, mitigation, although we use the same variables in the formula, fees collected can be used, not necessarily for acquisition, but for the improvement of parks and building new ones. So, land acquisition cost per acre, to give you a little bit more definition, is an estimated per acre value of vacant residential land in the city based upon receipt sales records. Staff did some research and collected three years of sales records for unimproved residential property in the city for each quadrant of the city with intended land use type of YR, which is residential vacant, from Riverside County Assessor's Office, and that data was reported by Riverside County's Information Technology Property Data Center. And so, the table on the screen provides you what our findings were by quadrant of the city. I will flash up a map of each quadrant, which you did see at the last council meeting during the presentation. As you can see, Quadrant One, which is essentially the northwest quadrant, average land acquisition cost was 32,000 and change. Quadrant Two was just under 500,000, and that is the northeast quadrant. Quadrant Three is the southwest. Average land acquisition cost is about 161,000. And then Quadrant Four is the southeast, and that is average land acquisition cost of $34,000 per acre.
Mr. Denver?
I understand these have to do with the cost of acquisition, basically the amount of the sales of the houses in those individual areas. They're not exactly along our lines as to our areas that we individually represent, but they're similar to that. As example number two, 499 is basically my district. Is that basically correct?
There's a map and a few slides ahead that does overlay the districts on these.
I understand. Where I'm going is, is that help me understand that because of Heritage Lakes and the cost of those homes and because of those prices, it does raise the value of the acreage in my area, and yet you look at some of the other areas at 32,000, mine is 500,000. Help me understand why a person who builds a house for 350,000 in my area should pay more than somebody who builds a house and pays 350,000 for it in another district? Help me with that understanding.
Sure. First, to clarify, these are land acquisition costs only, not home purchases. So, this is for vacant land intended for residential development, so not the actual cost of buying a home. The justification for doing it with this method, averaging the land values by quadrant, provides somewhat of an equal playing field. The attempt is to somewhat balance out the development, so while a fee in Quadrant One may be lower than a fee in Quadrant Two, it should be an incentive to developer to look at Quadrant One as an opportunity to develop further in Quadrant Two. This is simply a reflection of recent activity in that case, in this case, over the last three years. This is not necessarily to discourage developers from coming in. A lot of the developers end up paying quite a bit more in other communities than what we're proposing tonight, but the formula is basically tied to variables, is not based off of staff preference or simply a survey of surrounding communities.
Did I hear you say that you would prefer that people were to purchase land and build homes in other districts other than mine?
No, I didn't say that at all.
I understand. Why is it that a park costs more in my district than it costs in someone else's district?
The park doesn't cost more. The fees collected to install those parks may cost more.
Why are all the fees collected in my district going to stay in my district for the parks in my district?
The ordinances that were approved at the last meeting require, per Municipal Code, fees collected within, in and around that particular subdivision to stay in that area. They don't get spread to any other area.
I think this is all very odd. I don't agree with it. I understand that you're following the law, and so I'm going to vote, I'm not going to stop what's going on here, but I do not agree with this. I think this is an illogical way of doing it, and if I had my way, which I don't, I'd divide this all up by four and do it all even, but nobody asked me. Thank you.
Even though you voted on it last time.
But since you said that, I had some misinformation on this. I thought it had to do with a combination of a whole bunch of other things, and I've just had that cleared up to me here lately.
Okay. Mr. August.
Let's see. I just wanted to tell Mr. Denver, assuming, and I think that Quadrant Number One is over and overlaps into District One?
Yeah, I can flip ahead to that.
That's okay. I think it does. Anyway, I just let Mr. Denver know I'd gladly change districts with you on that one, okay?
Let's proceed with the presentation, and then maybe that'll stimulate some additional questions from the council.
Sure. So, a map that you've seen before is a city map with the quadrants overlaid. Essentially, the dividing points are the I-215 running north to south, and then Newport Road east to west, as I mentioned.
And so, here's my one question, and I apologize to staff for not bringing this to your attention before, when I too voted on this in the ordinance, but, Mr. City Attorney, the ordinance has already been adopted. We're potentially adopting a, is there any way that we can change the numbering of the quadrants to match the council manic districts? Because, right, I mean, it's just, it's confusing. In other words, right now, District One or Quadrant One matches, but none of the other quadrants match. In other words, two should be four, three could be two, four should be three.
Except for Quail Valley. I'll defer to Mr. Lennox on whether the actual quadrant numbers appeared in the ordinances that were approved. I don't think that they did.
Yeah, they did, actually. The specific, that it was split by quadrants.
So, are we stuck because we voted on them?
We could bring back a cleanup to the ordinance so that that could happen.
Well, I don't want to, at the pleasure of the council, it just seems to me a little bit, I mean, I apologize for not catching it before, but it would seem to me it would be clearer for everybody if it kind of matched the council manic districts.
You know, from time to time, cities will have a bucket of cleanup items that need to be addressed in a zoning code. In fact, I happened to look at one of a different nature this afternoon, and it seemed to me like something like that could be packaged up as part of an omnibus cleanup and get that done somewhere down the line.
Well, I'll defer to staff and Mr. Johnson to whether that needs to be done or not. So, I just wanted to bring that. It's caught my attention as I was continuing to review the agenda. Mr. Johnson?
Just a question, Robert. Does this relate any way and any how-to general plan in any maps that were in the general plan or any additional district areas that we had outlined in the general plan?
I'm getting the head shake "no" from Charles, so no, they do not.
It looks like we can make that easy adjustment.
Okay. If you're so inclined. All right. Please proceed.
Sure. So, assuming we did do this as a quadrant basis, this would be a map of Quadrant One, and the fees, based off the formulas that you saw on the prior slides, are essentially assessed according to this. As you'll notice, though, there is a hash area to the far left, which essentially is the moratorium area. That in itself does drive down the overall cost here because developers have not been in the area due to the limitation on building. We did do an overlay of the voting districts so that you can kind of see within the quadrant where each of these overlays, as you mentioned, Voting District One does fall nice and neatly within Quadrant One, but so does Voting District Two and a portion of three.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to make it absolutely very clear that this is not a dollar amount or a fee that a resident would have to pay. It is a dollar amount that developer pays when they build the dwelling in that particular area at that particular time. So, I just wanted to make that clear. I don't know if we started off that way, but I didn't want any confusion from the council or from staff that this was a fee passed on to a resident who currently lives here. This is a fee paid by the developer to build these dwelling units in that area, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And one additional overlay on this map does show the sales values over the last three years. You can see each of the color polygons, they equate to a range of sale prices, again, just on vacant land intended for residential sale, residential use. In Quadrant Two, here's the boundaries with the voting districts overlaid and the values, obviously, of the average values of land sales in the table. As you can see, there was quite a bit of activity, not a lot of activity, but a lot of high, or a few high-dollar activities for land purchases over the last three years, which really is what drives that fees per dwelling unit cost. In Quadrant Three, as you can see, most of that is in Voting District Two, but there's also some three overlapping in there. And the three-year sales polygons overlaid as well, again, sort of in the middle when compared to the other quadrants. And finally, Quadrant Four with the voting district, number three, and the sale data overlaid on top. And so, by comparison, we looked at what other agencies are currently charging for what we could gather. As you can see, I basically lined up all the quadrant's fees right here on the left table and on the right table, a comparison of some neighboring communities, agencies, as well as the county's information here. If the council was to adopt the resolution this evening, then it would take effect on the 16th of January. It would only apply to new applicants, not to ones that have already had track mats approved.
Sorry, why would Lake Elsinore put everything in one bucket like that?
I'm not really sure. I don't know that they, a lot of agencies, they have a myriad of fees that they need to get through and update, and they do that sometimes all at once, sometimes piecemeal, sometimes at different stages of implementing their general plan. Lake Elsinore, in this case, just hadn't done a thorough, I guess, assessment of their Quimby fees, or DIF fees for that matter, the way that other agencies had. So, right now, they have a base fee of $1,600 per dwelling unit, and then they also tie up other fees within a development agreement. So, in essence, it does, it does end up being quite a bit higher for the developers.
Mr. Johnson?
Just a little bit more information, Mr. Lees Meyer. I believe that, I won't say every one of their applicants for development that comes in is a development agreement, but it's a very, very high percentage. So, they, instead of using a fee structure, they do some bartering.
Sure.
For some things.
Okay.
And so, recommended actions are to conduct the public hearing this evening, and then if the councils will, adopt Resolution Number 15-406 and Resolution Number 15-413. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
I do.
Mr. August.
One question, I think, I didn't address this with you, Mr. Lennox, but I addressed it with some other people. I was under the impression that the money, the INLU fees collected in one particular quadrant will have to stay in that quadrant for a park to be in that area, but my question to someone, and I'll defer to the city attorney on it, should that big piece of land fall out of the sky, that we talk about a big regional park, should that happen? And we wanted to divert some INLU fees from one quadrant to another and compile them together for perhaps one big park, would we be able to do that?
Thank you, Councilman August. The short answer is that the Quimby Act requires that the area that pays the fee benefit from the park. That's the test. And so, if a large piece of land fell out of the sky, as in your scenario, and it could be demonstrated reliably that people from Area X would benefit from a park even though it's not precisely related, you know, located in Area X, but it's proximate to Area X, that would be sufficient to justify the expenditure of the funds in that area legally.
Well, as a follow-up to that, we do have one of those pieces of acreage that fell out of the sky through a development agreement with KB Home a few years ago. They have 20 acres in District Two, which is, I think, Quadrant Three. And so, to the extent that we could execute that and fund facilities there with these fee, INLU fees, I think, I mean, we already have that going in, a regional park. Wheat Field is a regional, the whole city benefits from Wheat Field, and so the whole city would therefore benefit from the 20-acre park next to Paloma Valley High School, assuming that that's what we do with it. Is that correct, based upon what your analysis?
Yeah. Effectively, it's a nexus showing, and, you know, you obviously brought a lot of facts to the table with regard to that particular piece of property. We would, of course, need to make sure that we could demonstrate that the folks that paid the fee are benefiting from the expenditure of the funds in that area, but I trust that we could make that demonstration.
All right. We have Mr. Denver up first.
Did I hear you say that even though Heritage Lakes are paying virtually two-thirds of the fees for that park, that park is miles away from us? Wouldn't the logic be that that large park would be up in area as this area, too?
I would have to defer to the specific facts and the specific circumstance that would arise. I was really just putting out there the general proposition that fees can be spent in another area if it can be shown that the fees benefit the area that paid the fees, I'm sorry, that the park benefits the area that paid the fee in the first instance.
Mr. Lees Meyer?
You may have already said the answer to this question, but what's the triggering mechanism for the assessment?
Are you asking when it gets paid?
Right.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, it, yeah, building permit phase?
Building permit, okay. So, those entitlements like Audi Murphy Ranch, Menifee Town Center, those sort of things, they'll be assessed, this new fee, when they pull permit?
Correct.
Great.
Is it, is it fair to ask, in District Two, on here, this district to my district, do you have any clue what this might raise, the price of building a house in our, in that district?
$7,000.
I couldn't, I couldn't spec- I couldn't, I couldn't speculate on that specifically. That's up to the developer to determine. Some of them have, you know, uh, economies of scale that they benefit from that we don't know, um, but overall, their, their hard costs would be higher by that much.
Mr. Edgerton, we're still in the, uh, questions of council members phase, the staff. Do you have any questions, sir?
Councilmember Edgerton?
No, I, I'm, I'm listening.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, if there are no more questions of council to staff, um, I'll open the public hearing at time seven twenty-nine. Madam Clerk, uh, have we received any correspondence on this item and was it properly noticed?
It was properly noticed, and yes, a form of correspondence was, I'm on the wrong one. I'm on the right one. A form of correspondence was received today. It is in your red folder. It was from Valleywide Recreation and Park District. Otherwise, I have no further correspondence.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any public testimony on this agenda item?
No, sir.
Very well. Close the public hearing at time seven thirty. We're inside the rail. Council, what is your pleasure on this item with respect to this resolution? Mr. August?
Uh, we'd make the motion to-
Absolutely.
-move, um, to pass, uh, both resolutions fourteen zero six and fourteen-
Sir, those resolutions will have to be considered individually with a roll call vote.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. August for resolution number fourteen dash four oh six. Is there a second?
Small correction, the original staff report shows fourteen dash when it should be fifteen dash due to the new year.
Okay, so both of these are fifteen-
Right, and they've been corrected for the record.
Fifteen dash four oh six. Is there a second on this item?
Second.
Mr. Lees Meyer seconds. Is there any other discussion before a roll call vote? Mr. August? Roll call vote, please.
We're doing a roll call vote on, uh, resolution- Yes, sir, on resolution fifteen four oh six adopting the Quimby fees. Council, um, Councilmember Edgerton?
Yeah, this, uh, an aye vote is an affirmation of staff recommendation, is it not?
That is correct.
Yeah, my vote is aye.
Thank you. Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Lees Meyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver?
I reluctantly vote aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on resolution fifteen dash four one three adopting the mitigation act fees?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lees Meyer, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. August. Roll call vote.
We are having a vote on the motion to approve resolution fifteen four thirteen, which approves the mitigation act fees. Councilmember Lees Meyer?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Uh, on to agenda item eleven point two. We have an appeal this evening, and before we do anything else, you may notice that we have a court reporter up here this evening who will be, uh, recording testimony by all as we open this process. And Madam Clerk, I believe all those who, uh, will be testifying tonight need to be sworn in. So for those, can you explain that for the audience?
Anyone who will be speaking tonight to this item, that includes the council, uh, and anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, will be sworn in by the court reporter as to telling truthfulness during this time, and she will conduct that, if you will, now, and if you'll just stand, if you intend to speak, she will swear you in at this time.
I solemnly swear that the testimony are about to be, they do the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God, please respond aye.
I do.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's the portion that we had to take care of administratively.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Johnson, uh, we have a staff report, I'm sure?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Charles Leclerc will start off with a staff report, uh, referencing the planning commission and its approval, and, uh, will be available for questions after that.
Mr. Leclerc?
Thank you, Mayor, council. The item before you is an appeal number twenty fourteen dash two sixty-four of the planning commission's December tenth, two thousand fourteen adoption of an environmental determination, a mitigated negative declaration, and approval of a plot plan, parcel map, conditional use permit, and variance. I apologize, however, so because of the nature of this proceeding, I'm going to be doing a lot, a lot of reading right off the, the screen and so forth. So sometimes it's going to sound a little, um, stiff. The item, uh, the location of the property is shown on the project location map in front of you, which is, which I have to do at the same time. It's at Menifee and Newport Avenue Roads here. The existing zoning of the property is specific plan number two forty-seven. The surrounding zoning is both specific plan two forty-seven and specific plan one fifty-eight. The existing uses are shown on the map here, basically to the right and the left and north, or, uh, up above is vacant with residential below it and kitty-cornered to it. The approval that was granted by the planning commission for plot plan fourteen dash oh nine one consisted of one hundred and twenty-one thousand-plus square foot commercial retail center consisting of ten buildings on fourteen acres, which included a forty-five thousand-plus square foot grocery store, which will be State or Brothers, four shop buildings totaling almost forty-one thousand square feet, five pad buildings totaling just over thirty-five thousand square feet. The development of the center will be, uh, conducted in two phases. All road improvements will be completed with phase one. The track, in addition to the plot plan approval, uh, the commission approved the tentative parcel map, uh, twenty fourteen oh ninety-three, which proposed to divide the fourteen acres of the site into thirteen parcels. A variance was approved as well for additional signs, additional sign area, and reduction in setback for one sign, and a conditional use permit dealing with the sale of beer, wine, and still spirits at the CVS, um, facility that will be on the site. The site plan shows the layout of buildings, the, uh, driveway entrances, and the phase two of the project. Highlighting here are the four driveways in, one each on the four, uh, roadways that surround the property. The appellant, representing Diamond Brothers Partnership, five and six, is challenging the appropriateness of the commission's environmental determination and thus approval of the plot plan and parcel map. Although the conditional use permit and variance are not cited in the appeal, their, their moving forward is dependent upon the environmental determination and plot plan approval, and therefore they are tied to the council's decision tonight. The appellant contends that the approvals must be reviewed due to the failure to adequately and properly follow guidelines set forth in the California-
Uh, Mr. Leclerc, just, uh, sorry to interrupt. Reviewed or reversed? The, I just want to, for the record-
Reversed.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Uh, by the quality act, and that the approval was based upon adopted mitigated negative declaration, but the MND was based on flawed SEQA initial study and on a flawed traffic study prepared by urban crossroads. The appeal material further states it is inconceivable that a project of this size will not generate any significant traffic issues. Yet that is precisely what the SEQA initial study concludes. As a result, other than paying into standard fees, which are inadequate, since there are no significant impacts identified, there are no appropriate mitigation measures being developed or implemented. I would like to point out that these comments are included within your staff report beginning on page four of fourteen. Staff's response to that general comment is that the initial study does identify that the project shall have an impact upon traffic, if not mitigated. But under the mitigated negative declaration, mitigation measures are required. The last page of the mitigation monitoring plan identifies the mitigation that the planning commission, based upon the recommendations of the city's engineering department, considered and accepted as adequate to address the incidental increase in, in the area's overall anticipated traffic that would directly result from this project. Uh, we have one slight correction for you. In your folder, you'll find an exhibit A, which should be part of the attachment, or is the attachment, to council resolution number fifteen dash one fifteen, which references attached exhibit A, and it's the mitigation monitoring plan. Additional comments from the, uh, appellant, which again are in your staff report, uh, identify that traffic study underestimates impacts on Newport Road, I two fifteen, Newport Road interchange, and so forth. Staff's response to this is that the engineering staff has carefully reviewed both the project's traffic analysis and the recent ARCO traffic analysis. ARCO is a gas station that will be built across the street from this project. Although the project's traffic analysis does not include, um, Winchester Hills and crossroad specific plans, the project's traffic volumes are so conservative, the counts are so high within that traffic analysis. For the Newport Road corridor, that staff is confident that traffic flow will not be adversely affected with the application of the required mitigation measures. ARCO's traffic, just as an example, ARCO's traffic study established peak hour volumes at six hundred and twenty-eight vehicles traveling east on Newport Road and nine hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and ninety-three vehicles traveling west, whereas the project's estimated peak hour volumes is nine hundred and thirty vehicles traveling east and eleven hundred and thirty-five vehicles traveling west. Clearly, their analysis anticipated an even higher traffic flow than ARCO's analysis, which was accepted, uh, adopted by the planning commission. The appellant comments, the second comment, the traffic study failed to include traffic generated from the recently approved ARCO gas station across the street. Oops, I apologize. This is simply incorrect. The project's traffic study includes traffic generated from the recently approved ARCO gas station to the north across the street from the project. Exhibit five dash three from the project's traffic study shows higher traffic volumes after ARCO is operational, as just mentioned on the previous slide, and this additional traffic was incorporated into the, uh, forecasted future traffic volumes and mitigation needs for the project. Third comment from the appellant was that the proposed signalized driveway is located six hundred feet from either of the intersections of Newport and Menifee Road or Laguna Vista, and as Newport is a six-lane divided road, the, the recommended separation distance for signals would be thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Staff's response is that the spacing of signalized intersections is a judgment call on the part of the city engineer, a licensed professional. Where, uh, where circumstances warrant, the city engineer may approve public facilities that he believes best serves the community, provided such improvements have received careful review to determine that such improvements shall not have negative traffic circulation impacts. Following consultation with two different traffic engineering firms, the city engineer accepted a mid-block signal for this development, which is anticipated to facilitate traffic movement by reducing turning movements on the two existing signalized intersections of budding the proposed project. The appellant also questions, uh, or states that in the traffic report, they use an incorrect number of left-in and left-out, uh, pass-by trips from Newport Road. This is true. The stat, the pass-by trips were not distributed using existing patterns, but instead distributed similar to the project trips. This is a common traffic engineering practice when there are multiple new driveways for a project. Nonetheless, it was determined that the proposed westbound left-turn pocket into driveway three, that's the driveway, the main driveway into the complex off of Newport Road, shall be two hundred feet in length, which is capable of handling one hundred and fifty vehicles per hour, much more than is needed for the anticipated traffic flow.
Mr. Lees Meyer?
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but I gotta ask the question. Can you go back, please? The hundred and fifty vehicles per hour, is that the number or, or the, okay, let me back up. If you were to calculate this the other way, would that hundred and fifty vehicles per hour be enough?
Which other way?
You, you just said that this is, this is a common practice, but there is another way to calculate this because you can calculate this based on the existing flow of traffic rather than the projected.
Oh, the projected is a hundred and two, uh, vehicles, uh, per hour, so-
Okay.
This would be well more than, than what would be needed.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Appellant, uh, fifth comment was, uh, dealing with the opening year average daily trip projections, uh, that those numbers are unacceptable levels of service, that this development would result in an unacceptable level of service. The traffic volume shown in the project's traffic analysis, traffic study, exhibit five dash nine, for opening year with both cumulative and project traffic, depicts an unrealistic scenario of impacts to Newport Road. This scenario illustrates every proposed project within the region constructed at the same time, but without any mitigation measures in place. This would not happen because this scenario does not meet the requirements of the city's general plan or development code. Excuse me. The appellant's sixth comment, that under the regional funding mechanism, the project will pay for, um, certain improvements through the transportation uniform mitigation fee, to, tump fee, and that these fees will not be adequate to improve, uh, cover the cost, uh, will not, hmm, not all of the improvements are covered by these fees. Trying to summarize these. Staff's response is that the regional funding mechanisms section of the initial study is provided as information to the developer to inform him or her of the impact fee that must be paid by the developer. As noted previously, the volume shown on exhibit five dash nine of the project's traffic study for opening year and both cumulative and project anticipated traffic volumes, excuse me, depicts an unrealistic scenario of impacts to Newport Road by showing every possible, every proposed project within the region constructed at the same time without any mitigation measures in place. This would not happen because this scenario does not meet the requirements of the general plan or development code. Applicants, the appellant's seventh comment deals with mitigation measure T one, and that the improvement specified in T one, uh, will be constructed pursuant to the fee program, but that, um, it's not clear that those improvements will be completed at the point needed for this project. Staff's response to that is that mitigation measure T one informs of the developer that development fee, development impact fees, the DIF fees, and transportation uniform mitigation fees, tump fees, are to be paid prior to the issuance of building permits. No assumptions of the impacts are made. In addition to these fees, the project will be responsible to pay road, bridge and benefit district, the RBBD fees, and a fair share contribution for traffic infrastructure improvements within the region. In other words, a share of, of blockway and however many other distances away, other traffic improvements are needed that contribute to the traffic flow on Newport Road. In addition to realistically looking at, oh, excuse me, um, a fair share contribution to the traffic infrastructure in the region, finally, the project shall pay one hundred percent of the cost of the mid-block signal. This is the only project that will pay for that signal. In addition to realistically looking at what improvements shall be in place at opening, the initial study looked at what traffic contribution, the proposed development that will happen in the area will realistically be in place at the time of the facility's opening.
Question of staff, uh, while it's here, the RBBD for this particular project, did we, did we not, not us, but didn't the county, um, undo that RBBD that this project might pay into?
I have to defer to the city engineer. I have to defer to the city engineer.
No. What the county undid was Newport Road interchange.
Okay, that's all right. That was the Winchester area.
The CFD.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that clarification. I was confused. Thank you.
The appellant concludes that in light of the foregoing, we respectfully request that the council reverse the approvals and request that both the traffic generally and the traffic signal be reevaluated along with the sequo initial study consistent with the comments set forth above.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc.
I've got a whole lot more. I'm sorry. Staff's response to that is that the planning commission did not err in its adoption of the proposed mitigated negative declaration, as the information that was contained within the material and the staff's recommendation supported that approval, that adoption of the mitigated negative. Further, the planning commission did not misinterpret or misapply the provisions of the municipal code in making its decision, as the record provided them sufficient evidence that allowed them to make the decision that they made. And finally, staff believes that the planning commission did not exceed its authority in approving the project, as the city council, through the municipal code, has granted the planning commission the authority to approve these kinds of projects. Additionally, the focus of the appellant's appeal is concern that the initial study, and therefore the mitigated negative declaration, failed to adequately identify and consider the potential traffic impacts generated from the project in relation, not only to this project, but to the cumulative development expected in the area. As illustrated, staff disagrees with this assertion. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission and the commission's acceptance by adopting the mitigated negative declaration is that the initial study did and does adequately identify and evaluate current and future traffic generations from the project, traffic generated, generation from the anticipated development within the area, and traffic flow on Newport Road from the project, surrounding area, and vehicles passing through the area. With such information, the infrastructure needed to meet this traffic flow was identified in the initial study, and adequate mitigation measures were required within the mitigated negative declaration to address the project fair share of those identified infrastructure improvement needs. At this, in a moment, the council will have four options, at least four options. You may have more than that. You may overturn, you may accept that the appellant has provided sufficient information to you, both in the material that's been presented in the staff reports, in this presentation, and whatever they may say at the days, and find that that is sufficient to overturn the planning commission's approval of the project, therefore rejecting the adequacy of the environmental assessment and denying the plot plan and tentative parcel map, which has the ripple effect of denying the variance and the conditional use permit. The city council may determine that they need additional information and continue this item to a date certain, requesting specific information from staff that we will provide at that point of the future identified date. The city council may find that the appellant has raised sufficient question and that you would like the planning commission to review this item, therefore you can remand the environmental review and the different projects back to the planning commission for further review and consideration. Or, as this is a de novo hearing, a from-scratch hearing, you can consider the information that has been provided to you tonight, and you may, there are resolutions within your material that would allow you to consider and adopt the mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring plan that I mentioned earlier that's in your red folder, and then approve the different projects that are identified in the resolutions that are on your screen and in your staff report and on your sheets. Now, since the project itself.
Excuse me, Mr. Leesmeyer. Those were planning commission resolution, that's a council resolution, correct?
Yes. These identify PC-15, 415, and so forth. My error, it should be CC.
Okay, thank you.
City Council. Thank you for catching that. Since this deals with the entire plot plan and the entire parcel map, we do have Russell Brady with MIG, the consultants that worked with staff on the review of this project in front of the planning commission. If you so desire, he can go through the material that was presented to the planning commission dealing with the architecture of the site, the buildings on site, the phasing, the passive gathering areas, the landscaping, the signage, and the alcohol sales. However, those issues weren't challenged in the appeal, so you can stand on the assumption that the planning commission carefully reviewed those issues and applied appropriate conditions to mitigate any or modify those structures and those approvals in a sufficient manner that it would be beneficial to the community. Again, it's up to the council if you want to go through that. We will have Russell come up and give that presentation. Or, since your focus is on the, primarily on the adequacy of the mitigated negative declaration specifically dealing with traffic, you can stand on the information that's been provided to you both in this presentation and in your staff report.
It'd be my preference, subject to approval of the council, to stick to the issues associated with the appellant's issues, and that we stand on those as presented by staff, as you just mentioned. Is there any objection to that? Hearing none. Council, do you have any questions of staff on this issue before we open the public hearing? Mr. Leesmeyer?
I would actually, I do honor the work that the planning commission did. I would just roughly like to hear the modifications of the project that may have been made during the planning commission meeting, if there are any, and if those do in fact still hold through this hearing in effect.
We are recommending that you, whatever modifications and modified conditions of approval that were agreed to at the public hearing, that those go forth and that those are what are included in your package. Russell, if you could identify what minor changes there were, there was some acceptance.
Monument sign, cart stall, something, I heard a couple of different things.
That's right. There were things like, they still had, there were still some questions, there were still some questions in regards to the design and placement of the cart stalls, the design and placement of the public gathering areas, common gathering areas, and.
Some comments on the outdoor seating.
Great. Before you speak, would you please identify yourself for the court reporter?
Sorry, Russell Brady, Planning Department contract staff. There are some comments on the outdoor seating design, as well as some provisions regarding parking and second floor area for mezzanine and other type of issues. Those are what come to memory right now, some of the primary points that were discussed at planning commission.
They were not substantive relative to the traffic discussion, driveway locations, or traffic flows.
As you may recall, there were other projects that the planning commission saw that outdoor seating was pushed for, and I believe I heard that there was some additional outdoor seating or some modifications to the outdoor seating in this project that were asked for. Has the applicant made any changes in regards to that? Does it satisfy the concerns of the commission at that time?
They elected not to identify specific locations at this time. Consistent with previous approvals, however, the commission applied a condition that said that they will work with staff to identify at least a certain size of one or multiple gathering areas as best benefited the community relative to the future development of the individual outer paths. Because if it's a retail commercial building, you may not want the gathering area there, or you may want to, versus a drive-through restaurant where you may want that gathering area, you may not want. So they rely upon staff to work with the applicant to meet at least a certain size or a couple of places to meet a certain size of gathering area.
And then the last question, the monument wall on the corner, you and I had a discussion previously about that matching that of the ARCO. Has that been resolved?
Yes, they've actually agreed to extend the walls so that it would be more in character with the wall of the ARCO station across the street.
Thank you. No other questions?
Mr. August?
And I just wanted to bring out something Mr. Leesmeyer spoke about. I did listen to the planning commission meeting, and I see the gentleman over there, Ms. Lee Sobek's here. But what I heard, and I believe this is correct, is that should the seating problem come back and it doesn't meet the satisfaction of people on the planning commission, that the planning commission has the option through an appeal to work with the developer. So I think that was worked out, and it was a really good job on the part of the planning commission and the developer, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Mr. Edgerton, do you have any questions of staff at this juncture?
Mr. Edgerton, do you have any questions of staff?
Not at the time. I've read the report carefully.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no additional questions at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing at time eight o'clock. And Madam Clerk, was this appeal properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor.
And have we received any additional correspondence associated with it?
No, Your Honor, we have not.
Then what we'll do at this juncture is we'll call for public testimony in the following order. We'll have the appellant come up first, Diamond Brothers or Diamond Brothers rep, followed by any public testimony, and then the applicant, Stater Brothers and their reps, and then we'll have an opportunity for the appellant to rebut any comments made at that point. So at this juncture, I'd like to call up Diamond Brothers to the podium.
Two names have been turned in, Your Honor, both Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Gabriel, in whatever order they wish.
Please proceed and state your name for the record.
Sure. I'll speak first. My name is Ron Sullivan. I reside at 28068 Orange Grove Avenue in the city of Menifee. I just want to state for the record, as we did at the planning commission, that we are not opposed, as some people have said, that we are opposed to the, and we're not opposed to the Stater Brothers or the CVS there. We're only opposed to the traffic signal and its impact to the city and also to the 28 acres of commercial properties directly across the street. As we stated in the, and I would like the opportunity to read this so I don't miss anything, if that's okay?
Please.
If I can indulge you. "As stated at the planning commission hearing, the traffic analysis is flawed and not quantifiable as an acceptable planning tool for traffic on an arterial roadway that is part of the regional transportation plan as identified by W. ARCO. As was stated at the planning commission hearing, the Diamond Brothers are in favor of the commercial development proposed for the Stater Brothers Shopping Center, but are opposed to the signal. We continue to believe that a driveway access is sufficient for additional ingress and egress in addition to those ingress and egress on Laguna Vista Drive, which where the primary signal is at Newport Road. Our primary concern continues to be the potential stacking of traffic at this signal, which could reasonably impede the reasonable ingress and egress of traffic in and out of a proposed shopping center on the 28-acre commercial site, as well as the ARCO station currently under construction. The stacking problem really came to our, was kind of highlighted. It was a Wednesday before Thanksgiving Day, 2:00 in the afternoon, I drove by. Traffic was stacked up going west from Antelope Road, past Menifee Lakes Drive. That's 2:00 in the afternoon. There was nothing. So we can only assume that we're going to have additional tracking, stacking whenever you have additional signals. It was stated that the traffic analysis for the Stater Brothers Commercial Center did not include a minimum of approximately 8,000 as a minimum residential units that will travel the Newport-Domdegoni Parkway corridor that fronts on the Stater Brothers site, as well as, nothing was given to the 28-acre commercial property owned by the Diamond Brothers Partnership across the street. There ought to be some reasonable amount of traffic that comes in and out of a commercial center on 14 and 1/2 acres and be able to apply that to 28 acres across the street to see how that impacts Newport Road and that signal. That was not done. It was also stated the traffic analysis did not show the driveway and the traffic from the ARCO station under construction that gave no value to traffic for the 28 acres immediately across the street. The primary concern of the owners of the 28-acre commercials across the street is that all traffic coming west and east does not adequately address the potential stacking that will occur at Menifee Road, Laguna Vista Drive, and the proposed signal. Thus making it very difficult for circulation to the 28 acres of commercial, we believe that a true and accurate traffic plan and projection be made before the construction or installation of this traffic signal. It must be identified right now that this is a traffic signal that has been generated strictly by the developer for this, for their 14 and 1/2 acre site. This is not something that was required in the whole traffic analysis for the city of Menifee. The traffic analysis shows that the traffic will be at the proposed opening date, that will be fine on the proposed opening date, 2016, and then goes on to say that all provisions have been made for future traffic to increase at 2% per year until buildout. But that exhibit shows that the only thing that is included in the buildout is within the confines of the city of Menifee's boundaries and does not include any of the regional stuff up and down Newport Road, which also addresses the additional 8,000 units that's already been approved and should have been specifically in their analysis. Builtout for this plan only addresses the tentative developments that are identified and not the 8,000 minimal units, residential units approved along the corridor from a regional perspective or any additional developments entitled or planned east of Highway 79 and Domdegoni Parkway. I'm not really saying that you got to include everything in Hemet, but a lot of people drive over from Hemet to come shop in our town because we got the best shops. So in some cases, you ought to really consider that. Let's keep in mind that Newport Road is a regional transportation corridor and is not isolated strictly for use of the Menifee residents, as well as, you know, some future tax revenue comes from outside the area. County and city adopted transportation plans indicate that on the arterial highway Newport Road, traffic signals would be spaced no less than a half a mile increments in order to move traffic on a regional corridor. Currently, the state, from State Street in Hemet to I-215 in Lake Elsinore, there exists one signalized intersection that's less than a half a mile increment, and that is just west of Canyon Lake for the Canyon Hills residential community. This entire route from this corridor is 23 miles long, and you only have one signal that is less than a half a mile. So that tells you that we need that half a mile increment to at least move traffic through our city. I don't think that we want this to look like the city of Hemet's Florida Avenue in five years from now or 10 years from now. The W. ARCO growth projections are depicted for the year 2020 and 2035. We saw nothing in this traffic analysis that at least showed what the regional impact would be for those years 2020 and 2035. They only say that it's going to be looked at at a 2% increase per year. 2% increase per year, I would assume, came from, I don't think it came out of the sky, but I think it come, that was the 2% growth projections in the last five years, I believe, that comes close to that. That's for the entire city of Hemet. That does not address what the growth is going to be in this particular corridor. To merely show that there's no impact and all traffic has been mitigated at the opening of 2016, and you read that all the way through the analysis, all they do basically is address 2016, we think that it's short-sighted and the traffic and the residents, for the traffic and the residents and the people who live here in this city. In order to fully analyze the commercial site circulation plan, you need to fully assess the impact also to Laguna Vista Drive. A lot of emphasis has been put strictly on Newport Road, but I think that when you look. Newport Road. But I think that when you look at everything that's going on and some of the developments already to the south, and I think that there's some people understand that the dairy is going out, and they also didn't put in the, because there's no, there's no development plan for the apartments and condos that are directly adjacent to Laguna Vista Drive. They didn't show what that impact is. So I just want to keep in mind that the current developments on the exhibits are woefully inadequate to address what the full impact's going to be on both Newport Road and Laguna Vista Drive. In order to fully analyze this commercial site circulation, you need to fully assess the impact that does go on Laguna Vista Drive using the traffic generation contained in the lake-specific plan and in particular, the apartment and condo plan directly adjacent to Laguna Vista Drive and its impact. Since you have basically limited the access to Menifee Road north and south traffic because you've basically not let circulation go out to Rockport, and you have, we couldn't identify anything for the driveway that goes out on Newport. I believe that's a double, double yellow line. You can't turn south. You can only go north, and it's a short stretch, which is another stacking problem. So you have artists, so with that, I think you've artificially constrained any traffic flow north and particularly south on Menifee Road out of this site. It is our belief that under the current circulation plan, there would be adequate turn lanes on Laguna Vista Drive for all future traffic going, that is south of Newport and Dominigoni, all the way down to Craig. Because beyond Craig, then you're going to be accessing probably Scott Road. Our last concern is that we believe that the Planning Commission was given premature comfort, that the traffic analysis was reviewed by two national transportation firms, that affirmed that the traffic signal and mitigation measures proposed were confirmed, yet these studies and confirmations were not available at the time of the Planning Commission hearing, nor were they made available to the public and the, or contained in the Planning Commission's staff packet at the time of the hearing. It is our understanding now that they were not written comments, they were only a telephone conversation, and so we have no idea on what was actually submitted, and if it was the traffic study, we believe that that's flawed. And if they, those two firms, they only can review what they've seen. So we don't believe that that should be part of the record. When somebody gets a telephone conversation and you can't back it up with at least a piece of paper, I, you know, I think, you know, we could, we could do just a little bit better here. Although I got a great deal of confidence in Mr. Smith. It would just be a nice learning thing here that when you got confirmations from two national firms, put it in writing so that everybody feels comfortable. I don't feel comfortable just having a telephone conversation reported. We continue to believe that a true and accurate and valid traffic analysis be supplied before the signal is approved for construction and has addressed the impacts to the regional corridor and the adjacent properties. And thank you.
Good evening, Honorable City Council and Honorable Mayor. Thank you for taking the time this evening to hear this appeal. My name is Gavriel Gabriel. I'm an attorney, and as you know, I represent Diamond Brothers Partnerships. Now, as you may or may not know, Diamond Brothers Partnerships owns commercial real estate in the area, and as such, I'll echo the sentiments of Mr. Sullivan, they're very interested in business, especially in a fledgling, a fledgling city like Menifee. That's why they were excited to see, when they received notice of the Stater Brothers project, that a good business tenant was going across the street to be a neighbor. But what they didn't like, and what we saw, was this traffic signal. We thought at first blush, this was a bad idea. Now, we waited to reserve judgment and to see how this traffic signal would be explained. Waited for the traffic report for the initial study. However, when we reviewed the traffic study and the initial study, it was flawed. And I'll go through and explain why it was flawed. Now, everyone knows, once this traffic signal goes in, it won't be ripped out. There's no going back. Once it's in the ground, you're not going to go in there and take it back out.
Mr. Gabriel, could I interrupt you just for one second? Mr. Leclerc, could you please put up the map of the project that shows the four entrances? I meant to ask that when Mr. Sullivan, thank you very much. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you. So the key here is to make sure everyone did their homework. Make sure a proper analysis was done, and that there's proper support to ensure that this traffic signal is a good idea. Now, when we took a good, hard look at the traffic study, initial study, we saw that it failed. Now, I'm not an engineer, I'm an attorney. I looked to see if processes and procedures were met. In other words, did the initial study identify problems and whether proper mitigation measures developed? Now, I'll leave it to the engineer to determine if the appropriateness of these mitigation measures. But I'm not sure the council's awareness of CEQA, but the way CEQA works, it identifies problems in the form of significant impacts and then determines applicable commensurate mitigation measures. Now, if you go through the initial study, you'll see that under transportation and traffic, the only box that was marked was less than significant impact and less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated. Now, what this means is there are no problems. If there are no problems, there are no mitigation measures developed. This is why we said in the appeal, it's inconceivable for 136,000 square foot project to just be plopped in there to not have any significant impacts. Hundreds of parking spaces, no significant impacts. Now, in response to our appeal, staff stated, and thank you, Mr. Leclerc, for reading that entire staff comment. I haven't had an opportunity, so I'll limit myself. I haven't had an opportunity to read all the comments, just some that were provided a week ago by Ms. Kathy, I'll refer to her as Ms. Kathy, the city clerk. But in response to our appeal, staff stated there are mitigation measures. Okay? Now, staff's correct, there are improvements identified, okay? But these are general traffic improvements. They are not project-generated improvements. So again, if you do not identify significant impacts related to the project, then you can't develop any solutions. And that's the problem with this report. We just don't believe that a project of this size, of this magnitude, won't have any significant impact. Now, just to be clear, when I see a project of this size, okay, and in the initial study it's marked less than significant impact, it raises a red flag in my mind because it doesn't make sense. Now, as a result of this red flag, we had our engineer review this report, and not surprisingly, he identified that the traffic report, which is the basis for the initial study, which is the basis for the mitigated negative declaration, which is the basis for this traffic signal, was significantly flawed. Okay, let me further explain. Some of the issues our expert identified, and it was outlined in our letter, but let me go through it. Now Newport Road, as you know, you live here, I don't live here. Hopefully, you'll welcome me back here as a resident, if I so choose to do so. Newport Road is an east-west arterial. Okay, this means it carries a lot of traffic from the east, the west, and vice versa. So as such, you would think it's critical to analyze projects that are to the west, to the east of this project site. Now, if you look at the report, it focuses, and I have it as Exhibit 4 or 5, it focuses mainly on projects to the north and to the south. But it fails to mention two projects directly to the east. Now, that doesn't make sense. Sure.
Can you please put it up on the?
Too fast for the computer. That's a first.
Wally still there?
Are you able to continue hearing these as we're preparing a slide, Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You had it there, Julie, just a moment ago. And I apologize for the interruption. I just want to, we want to be able to visualize what it is that you're articulating.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And if you could zoom a little bit more with the hand, with the arm? Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Thank you. Now, if you'll see, this project site is here marked blue. I don't know. And as I said, the majority of projects that were analyzed by this traffic report were directly north and south and west of this project site. Now, it failed to consider, and I believe the staff comments will back me up on this, two general specific plans, Winchester and Crossroads, that have, as Ron Sullivan said, thousands of homes along Domingione Parkway between Leon and Winchester. This project failed to include that in its analysis. And it failed to include a gas station right across the street. Certainly, people will be driving along Newport to go to a gas station. Certainly will increase traffic flow to that, along Newport. Now, at the Planning Commission, it was disingenuously represented that these projects were taken into account. But we know that's not true. Because if you look at Page 42 and 43 of the traffic report, you'll see the three projects that I just pointed out are not included in this study. So these are significant omissions. It shows that the traffic study is deficient. Now, another point that our expert pointed out was that there's no question, this traffic signal is in direct violation of the Menifee general plan. Okay? The traffic signal is purported to be halfway between Menifee and Laguna Vista. Now, I'm not a traffic expert, but as an attorney, I know that when the city decides to go against a general plan, city's general plan, there must be a reasonable basis, or at least protocol procedure that must be met, to justify going against the general plan. Now, staff commented this was a judgment call on behalf of the city engineer. But it's not just a judgment call. There needs to be a valid reason for it. Now, when it was pointed out to Planning Commission that this traffic signal would cause congestion, the traffic engineer responded that the synchronization of the traffic lights would actually increase traffic flow, would actually speed up traffic flow, and that was the reason why the traffic signal was needed. But then later on in the hearing, I believe it was Planning Commissioner Chris Thomas, he stated that he wanted to see traffic slowed because there was a school nearby. Now, those are two opposite reasons of the spectrum. One, keep traffic flow going fast and smoothly. The other, we want to slow it down because of the school nearby. Which one is it? There's an inconsistency there. Now, another flaw pointed out by our expert in this traffic report is that it fails to analyze the impact that this proposed traffic signal will have on an already projected level, failing level of service, failing level of acceptable service. For example, project year 2016, the traffic report predicts that between the I-215 and Menifee, Newport Road will be at a, will be performing at a less than acceptable level of service. This means lower than a D, an E or an F. But it doesn't analyze how this proposed traffic signal put in right in between Newport, which is a budding, this less than acceptable level of service, is going to impact that traffic. Again, this goes to show that the report did not fully analyze the traffic, the impact of this traffic signal. So let's talk about the mitigation measures that were pointed out, that were identified in the initial study. Now, let me just be clear. The cumulative impact is different than the project impact. Okay? And the mitigation measures developed for cumulative impacts are different than those developed for project-specific impacts. Okay? So the report said that as a result of the cumulative impact this project will have in the area, that Newport Road needed to be widened from six lanes to eight lanes. And then, as a mitigation measure, it proposed that Stater, that the project pay into TUMF, which is the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, to address those cumulative impacts. But we know that TUMF doesn't cover widening from six lanes to eight lanes. It only covers widening up to six lanes. So how that cumulative impact addresses that concern is unclear to me. Now, in parting, Ron Sullivan, and I'll echo the sentiment again, are in favor of business in this area. But at what cost? They are not for business if it means getting this traffic analysis wrong. Because what's the consequence of getting this wrong? You create traffic congestion, which means that traffic will divert to other areas of Newport, which means that potential customers will not, will not want to travel along Newport, which means they will not go to these businesses. That's why it behooves this council to make sure that this traffic signal, this, the impact of this traffic signal and the analysis that goes along with it is done correctly. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council at this juncture of the appellate? Before we call additional testimony from the public, Mr. August?
I wanted to address a couple of things. As I said, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting, and I agree with Mr. Sullivan's assessment. He's already talking about traffic at some peak periods during the day being backed all the way up to Menifee. I am not an environmental specialist, but something tells me that when you put thousands and thousands and more thousands of homes east of the city along Newport Drive and Dominigoni Drive, one little insignificant light is going to stop the gridlock that we're probably going to see in the future. And that's kind of how we're going to have, we're going to mitigate to a certain extent with the interchange, the cloverleaf at the interchange. But I have seen, traveled around the cities, I traveled to Nuevo quite often, and I do travel to Temecula quite often, and it's not uncommon for me to see streetlights, intersections along businesses that are less than 1,320 feet away. So I would say, just, and I'm not an expert in this, but I would say that there is a lot of latitude and judgment put into these, to the plans on this. But the one thing I did want to bring up is I heard Mr. Sullivan's testimony at the Planning Commission. He said he was going to have to give up, Stater, Diamond Brothers was going to have to give up developable, developable space and three pads. I just want to ask you, do you know of any maps or any plot plans that Diamond Brothers has even submitted to the city yet?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Either am I. So how could you be giving up pads, Mr. Sullivan's comments? How could you be giving up pads if there's, if nobody's seen a map? Or how could he convince me when there's no map?
Mr. August, I'm unclear what you're talking about. I apologize, but I was here to talk about the traffic study, not about pads. I apologize.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Along those lines, Mr. Sullivan and you have done a marvelous job articulating the regional issues associated with this. I'm having a hard time understanding how your client is grieved by having this traffic signal at its proposed location.
Well, that's the problem. We don't know. That's the problem. We don't know what issues, what impacts are gonna be, are gonna be had as a result of this traffic signal. And that's the concern, because we don't believe that the proper analysis was done in this report.
I acknowledge that there's about, well, there's sixteen thousand entitled units east of our city border, between Scott Road to the south, Winchester Road to the east, Simpson Road to the north, and our eastern border. What we're talking about along this corridor, I don't know whether it's eight thousand or not, or some change or something less. But, you know, traffic lights are timed all the time. Lindenberger, Laguna Vista, this proposed light, to Menifee Road. The city's capital improvement plan, as approved by this council, addresses the degradation in Newport Road that you spoke of in your testimony. It's an interchange issue. When the Newport Road I-215 interchange gets fully cloverleafed, which is under construction now, it will not be a D. It'll be a C, my understanding from our CIP. So, again, I'm having a hard time understanding how your client is grieved by this traffic light. And that, that's where I'm at.
Okay. I appreciate that. And, you know, again, I echo the sentiment. We can't fully understand this traffic report. And we've had an expert evaluate it, had an expert look at it, and he said this is what's wrong with this traffic report. And the concern, the ultimate concern, I believe was the last point I made, if this is done, if we get this wrong, the people that are gonna pay the ultimate price are gonna be the residents and the businesses, the very thing that drives commerce in the city of Menifee. And that's the concern of my clients.
Mr. Denver?
This is all, seems very technical, but just for basics, if you have a light, and you have a light, and you have a light, and they're all timed, how, and they're all timed so that they're all red, they're all green, and you've got spaces for cars to get off enough, I assume, to get off to turn, how does the number of lights, if they're all timed, what if you had forty lights between, I'm exaggerating, obviously, but if you had forty lights and they were all green or all red, how does it bother the problem?
Now, again, this might be outside the scope of my expertise. I'm an attorney, not a traffic engineer. But my understanding, to the best of my understanding, is the problem that you're addressing right now isn't talked about, isn't discussed in this report. Or the, hell, the, the solution that you may be talking about isn't addressed in this report. If that's the case, if the green light synchronization is gonna help traffic flow, and it's gonna increase traffic flow, well, where is that in the, in the traffic study? It doesn't talk about it.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Is your traffic engineer here?
My traffic engineer, our consultant is here, but he's not gonna testify today. He's gonna testify when the appropriate time comes. And that's gonna be if formal litigation is needed.
All right. Let's take some, let's take some testimony from the public. Subject to recall the podium.
Thank you.
Do we have any public speakers on this item?
No one has turned in a speaker slip on this item.
I'll call for a public testimony at this point. If there's anybody, there were some people in the audience who stood that potentially could come to the podium. Is there anybody that desires to come and address this matter? Please come forward and state your name for the record and speak. Doing well?
My name is Eileen Schonard, and I live on the corner of Menifee Road and Newport.
Excuse me, Eileen, I need you to speak directly into the mic as close as you can. And please spell your last name.
Okay. S-C-H-O-O-N-A-R-D.
Thank you.
Thank you. My backyard is that corner.
Which corner?
Menifee Road and Newport Road.
On which quadrant?
There, there's three empty lots on the, on the three other corners.
So are you on the northwest corner of your house? I'm trying, I'm not-
In the golf course?
The golf?
There's only one house that backs up my back-
Are you across the street from the station, the fire station, to the west? You live to the west of the fires? Okay. That'd be the northwest corner. All right. Thank you.
I wake up at four in the morning because of the traffic. And it's not good traffic. It's people that are so angry at having to sit there and over and over, and then they do it again coming home. And they get through those lights, one car at a time, because there's already so many cars in front of them, they can't get through. And you hear people, it's on the, it's on the overpass of the I-215, which I understand is gonna be remedied, hopefully. But you gotta feel sorry for these people. I mean, these people are trying to go to work. I can only imagine making it worse. Because what happened was you gave us two new lanes on Newport, and then a big sign saying welcome. We got four new neighborhoods. That doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't make any sense to anybody. Because it's already horrible for those people. I can stand at my back door at night and count forty-eight lights. I know, I didn't believe it either. Forty-eight lights already. That doesn't count State or Brothers and Arco. So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, I understand what's approved and what isn't. But I'm, from a human point of view, this is just gonna get worse. Can't you figure out a way to let those people go so they don't have to spend most of their time from the I-215 to Dominagonia, wherever they go out there? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public speakers? Yes, sir?
My name's Edward Germo, and I live in Menifee.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you please spell your name for the record?
Edward, and my last name is G-E-R-M-O.
Thank you.
I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not an engineer by all means. But I've lived in Orange County. I've lived in Hemet. I now live in Menifee. And one more turning lane, from a driver's point of view, a daily driver to and from works point of view, do lots of driving, one more turning lane on Newport Road is gonna cause havoc. Where there's turning lanes, you got people trying to turn, backing up into the roadway so the people behind them can't go. So when the light's red, you can have people that are trying to turn, and all the people behind them, it's, turning lanes are a pain in the butt. One extra turning lane is gonna be a hassle. And like the attorney said, once you put it in, it's not coming out. So why not try it without the turning lane first, see how it works, and then see about engineering it? Like I said, I'm not an engineer, but I drive a lot. And that's my point of view.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Hearing none. At this juncture, we'll call up the applicant, State or Brothers, or representative from State or Brothers.
Good evening, council members, staff, audience members. My name's Larry Canale, in conjunction with Mr. Joseph Meyer, Pacific Retail Partners, and Mike Reed, Senior Director for Real Estate of State or Brothers. We're pleased to be here this evening. I'm gonna keep this fairly brief. And if you have specific questions, I can come back up and address things at your direction. I'd like to kinda just give an overview briefly of what we've addressed in this entire process.
And can you go back to the schematic as well, please?
In particular, I'd like to thank staff. We've worked over the preceding fifteen, sixteen months with staff on over four major submittals, comments, review. We have submitted nine comprehensive studies. We identified traffic as a major concern from the onset. We have had particular attention to traffic. And I'll let staff speak to, to those items. But what we've gone through and what's been produced, in our opinion, is really a extremely well-designed, particularly enhanced and functional center for the city. We've got a great tenant and lineup mix. And we're a little baffled at the applicant's position on traffic. And I'll let staff speak to some of those specific questions. But in our summary position, we concur with staff's analysis, the traffic analysis that's been done to date, the questions and responses of the appellate, and we would encourage the city council to move forward with this project.
Any questions of the applicant at this juncture? I'd just like to ask you, throughout the whole process, did you agree to all of the conditions of approval as imposed by our staff?
Yes, we have.
And as well as the planning commission?
Yes. And in particular, out of over two-hundred-and-fifty conditions of approval, we only had six that required consultation with the planning commission. And we're in concurrence with all conditions of approval of the project, as well as the revisions at planning commission.
Those six items were worked out?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. August?
I just wanted to ask you a question, sir. Did, was it, was this intersection light developer-driven? Was it a discussion with the planning staff? I understand this has been in planning for fourteen months now. How did we arrive at this light?
At this intersection? It's really market-driven. You know, State or Brothers is a great regional tenant. Their store spacing, servicing on this side of the freeway. It's been a commercially zoned and designated parcel as part of a specific plan for quite some time. So it was a natural engagement process.
This, this, so having, I've seen, everywhere I go, I see these driveways into big shopping complexes and things like that. So this, I'm not in common with it. And I don't see anything wrong with it. But you're saying it's market-driven. This, this really enhances the businesses that are in the, in the complex or the center.
It does.
Being able to go right into the center of it.
It does. It creates the effective, safe ingress and egress to the center.
And also the point that the gentleman made over here, there is potential possibility, depending on the traffic loads we see in the future, that there will be some backup, there will be some backup going west on Newport because of the left turn pocket into your center. But there's also east-west egress on Laguna Vista, and also on Menifee Road. And smart drivers who are familiar with the area will probably figure that out before too much longer. But something we didn't mention before, one of the things I liked that maybe you didn't consider, because we heard testimony at the workshop from parents from the school. And this will, of course, relieve some of that pressure on Menifee Road across from the school, too. So that's one, another reason why I favor, favor this.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to address that left turn pocket, I believe that will be inside the median that's currently built there. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Smith to speak to this. And secondly, I believe the left turn pocket could go back as far as Laguna Vista Drive, to have an open pocket all the way back so that stacking from the left turn pocket wouldn't occur. But for, as far back as we can make adjustments on Laguna Vista Drive, I apologize, on Newport, in the median itself, east of Laguna Vista Drive. Is that correct?
That's correct, City Manager. Our goal is not to have traffic backing up into the through traffic along Newport Road, having traffic making left turns. So we, the throat's deep enough to accommodate the traffic. The signals will be timed and interconnected to work together to make sure that traffic doesn't back up into through lanes.
Mr. Canales, do you have anything else to add at this juncture?
Not at this point. We're more welcome to address any questions later.
All right. Very well. Thank you. At this juncture, call back the appellate for final rebuttal, or any additional comments that you wish to make at this point?
Thank you, city council members. Mayor, at this time, if, if you would like our engineer to come up here and address comments and concerns, he's willing to come up here and discuss them with you. If you'd like, I can bring him up right now.
Please.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Leesmeyer, you're yes?
Yeah, I just had one question.
Mr. Denver? Mr. Leesmeyer, if you'd like to answer or ask a question, please proceed.
Okay. I'll allow him to introduce himself?
Sure, of course. Come on up.
Dileshe, Albert Webber, so I'm a district traffic engineer and a civil engineer in California.
Could you spell your, spell your name for the record, please?
D-I-L-E-S-H. That's my first name. Last name is S-H-E-T-H.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you for your, your breakdown of your seven points here. Number five, I just, I just couldn't get my head around it. Can you help me understand the logic in here?
Thank you. It's up on the screen, too.
I think there's a little-
Is that the right one?
There's a little more to it than just those words, I believe.
So what it is, that traffic study identifies average daily traffic along Newport Road, anywhere from fifty-five thousand to seventy thousand. So if you go by capacity of the six-lane roadway or eight-lane roadway, the six-lane roadway, you know, so if you have fifty-five thousand cars on a six-lane roadway, it's gonna operate at either level of service E or F. So that, that's the point I made, based on the traffic.
So in your opinion, what would the accurate mitigation measure be to mitigate for that so we aren't at a level F?
It was not identified, but most likely additional lanes needed on the roadway.
Additional lanes from, from both the north side and the south side of the road?
That's correct. Or if the other improvements, the city does not have all the east-west corridor built yet. So there'll be future roadway built, east-west corridors. So some of the traffic will go on east-west corridors. Until then, then you will have some deficient level of service.
Mr. Denver?
What does it have to do with the light? Why, how does the light help or hurt that?
Good question.
So the question about the light, I think you had about the synchronization. So, and you know, I'm a traffic, traffic engineer. I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, we have proposed light less than thirteen hundred feet, you know, thousand feet, nine hundred feet. But when you get closer and closer, when you have two signals, then if somebody's traveling, say fifty miles an hour, so they're traveling at about seventy-three, seventy-five feet per second. So he has to make a decision on two lights now because, you know, he's traveling almost seven to eight seconds within two intersections. So if one is red, one is green, it gets confusing sometimes. So there is a potential of, you know, people misunderstanding the cause, like the light they see, you know, because of having it too close together. If you notice that on Arlington in City Riverside, you know, by the Mission Plaza, some of the signals are too close together. So sometime you can see, you know, you get misreading. And there is a school area, then the future, the shopping center develops, then there'll be a crosswalk going across. So the crosswalk's gonna be about one-hundred-and-ten feet long. So if somebody presses the button, wanna cross, then you will put it out of sync, and it will almost take thirty seconds to, twenty-five to thirty seconds to cross the street. So at that time, you know, the synchronization will not work, and people have to stop.
Is that true? Is that, does the synchronization go out of sync when you hit the microcrosswalk?
It would affect the synchronization. However, the comment just made, no, the comment made about seventy-five feet or so per second, that would give somebody in a six-hundred-foot span eight seconds to respond to the, to the change in signal. But we'll leave it up to the traffic experts relative to the rest of the question.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I confirm with staff that has been working on this synchronization, interconnect, and a PED call will not interrupt this interconnect. And we're willing to sit down and show you how that will occur.
Mr. August?
Just a couple of quick questions. I'm a little confused. Are you saying that because of the streetlight, the level of service from Antelope to Menifee Road will be an F?
No.
What do you say?
No, that was not the point.
Why is Menifee Road gonna be, Newport Road gonna be an F in your judgment, a level of service?
It's just because of the cumulative project traffic, not because of this project or not because of the traffic light. It's just the-
Exactly. Okay. I wouldn't mind making that point. And one other thing, one thing we have, we've all failed to mention here is safety. If you listen to the people that came to the workshop, what's our primary- what's our primary goal here? To move traffic through the city of Menifee from east of the city? Or do we worry about our school kids and the safety of the people that want to cross Newport every once in a while? So what's our priority? I think we have to look at it several different ways. Not just moving traffic through the city of Menifee, even though I realize that's one of the requirements that people expect from us regionally. But we also have to factor in the safety and the wishes, the comfort and the quality of life of the people here as well.
Just a clarifying question. You mentioned earlier in your statement in response to Mr. Lees Meyer's question, did I hear you correctly when you stated that you have, as a professional traffic engineer, recommended traffic signals that increments less than 1,320 feet in your professional life?
I have. I try to stick with about 1,000 feet or so.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions at this point? All right. Sir?
I have some questions for our engineer, if you don't mind, Diles. If you would appease me, counsel. Now, you stated that-
Before I allow it-
Please.
City Attorney, is this appropriate to allow? In the interest of being a fair hearing? I don't want to overstep and, you know-
It is within your discretion to allow it to happen.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. You stated that you have accepted, or you have seen signals with less than 1,000 feet, but you stick within the general parameters for 1,000 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, I try to get as much as possible. I know sometime development, it does need signal less than, you know, what 1,320 allow. You know, the way the intersection spacing is. But try to maximize, so create not a queuing and backup into the intersection.
Now, in your experience, with a signal like the one, the traffic signal like the one proposed here, is there a concern, at least from your perspective, from your experience, if you put a traffic signal, as they depicted, that's driveway number three, would there be queuing that could spill over onto Laguna Vista from Newport?
I mean, there is a potential there'll be queuing. I mean, I know they have done the queuing analysis. They show it will work adequately, but, you know, that's a, you know, perfect scenario, like doing the queuing analysis. But, you know, sometime your traffic, you know, does not flow the way, you know, the traffic study does. And you may have certain cycle, and then you will not clear all the queuing you have. So queuing might back up, you know, so you will keep building it up. So when you have too close a intersection, then it can spill over to the next intersection. That's the possibility.
But the queuing is adequate, as you just stated?
For year 2016, I have seen, yeah.
Now, you saw the report, and this will be my last question. You saw the report, the projected analysis that you're commenting on for year 2016. It doesn't include two projects to the east and that would directly impact your analysis for the queuing if the signal's put in. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the traffic study, I did not see projects within the Winchester Hills Public Plan and Crossroads Public Plan that, based on the figures provided.
Thank you.
All right, and I know you stated, as you came up to the podium, your name and credentials. How long have you been a certified traffic engineer or an engineer in your professional life? If you could share, please?
Yeah, since 2001, I'm a California traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional questions or closing statements, Mr. Gabriel?
Only if the council and, or Mr. Mayor, you have any questions, any concerns, I'd be happy to try and oblige you with my analysis.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, are there any additional questions at this juncture? Mr. Edgerton, do you have any questions, sir?
Mr. Edgerton, did you have any questions at this juncture of the hearing?
Do I have any questions?
Yes.
No, and I would add that, as my colleagues know, I live near the site, and I have walked the site and drive that site almost every day. So I've been most interested in the presentations tonight. I'm very appreciative of e-commercial that can be built there, whether it be State of Brothers, Diamond Brothers, because for the convenience of the people in that corner of the city, they more often than not shop at Albertson's in Murrieta, Savon in Murrieta, Grindr in Murrieta, because it's literally closer and faster than going Newport and tackling that traffic across the bridge times. So I listen very carefully, and I would, at this point, I'm in agreement with Mayor. I'm having difficulty in understanding why this light interferes with the applicant, but I'm prepared to continue to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. At this juncture, we have no more questions, and I'm going to close the public hearing at time 8:55. We're inside the rail. Could you go back to the rec staff recommendation slide, please?
I did have some questions for staff.
Okay, absolutely. Mr. Lees Meyer, you have the floor.
I think we're kind of missing the point here. The problem isn't the signal. The question is, is the traffic study flawed, right? It's not, do they get a signal, do they not? I just want to ask our city engineer, based on what you've heard tonight, do you still feel confident that the traffic study that was provided for this project is accurate? Specifically, when they made reference to one exhibit showing two projects in their cumulative study, and then, in fact, they were not in the study later on? Do you still feel confident that we're good?
I feel very confident that we're good. The numbers presented in this project's traffic impact analysis are conservative numbers when you compare it to the ARCO's traffic study, which the engineer that was just up here prepared. Those numbers are greater, as was pointed out by Charles Leclerc in his comments. So I feel very confident that the analysis is appropriate.
Just a fundamental question to help me wrap my head around it. What's the normal threshold for calculating projects for a cumulative nature like this? I mean, how far out do you go? Where do you draw the line?
As far as, how far out do you look at development?
Sure. Not time-wise, distance-wise. I mean, we'll be, you know, Romney to comment, well, I don't want you to go all the way to him.
Well, in this case, we looked at the corridor from east to west. As mentioned, and we all know, Newport Road is an important corridor through our community. So in this case, we looked end-to-end on it. So to answer your question, you look until you don't see any more issues that are being created along a corridor. So it's, so until you feel comfortable that the issues have been addressed.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do want to remind us all that we did complete the Menifee Missing Link, which provides a traffic relief to the north. There will be the interchange project starting very soon here in the early spring to February or so, which is gonna increase the interchange as well and free-flow traffic north and south on the interchange, as well as, yes, we did add an additional traffic lane east-west on Newport Road. And you can see where it's backed up, but that stacking has to do with the interchange itself. So if you want to look at how far you go out to look at traffic, I think we've done it all the way to the intersection of the interstate, 215 in Newport. And with the additional work we did on Menifee Road to have traffic flow north that way. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this is not the only community development or neighborhood center that's gonna be around, providing access to people, providing access to, for residents to enjoy amenities. We have a couple of other developments coming through that will either help more of the folks that are going to be traveling down Menifee Road to this beautifully-planned center. There's another Heritage Square Shopping Center at McCall in Menifee that's working its way through the process. So that would alleviate some of the Heritage Lakes folks from driving south down to the center. So when you look at it in comparison, will it have an immediate impact on traffic? I think we've identified that it will, and I think we've also identified on how, ways to mitigate that. And secondarily, as more development comes in, it's going to pull folks away from this area. And so that's just the comments I want to make.
Mr. Lees Meyer, you still have the floor.
I just had a fundamental question about the light itself. Obviously, we understand that the traffic studies are okay. Could we possibly plan for the light? Let State of Brothers put the money for the light in a kiddy and do a three-way intersection, or maybe do a left-in with no exit? And if traffic becomes an issue, then add the light later. Do we need to add the light now?
I believe we need the light now for two reasons. One, if we were to do what you're suggesting, you're gonna have, you're gonna have more traffic in that area because you have an operating shopping center. So when we go in to put in the traffic signal later, we're not only gonna be impacting the through traffic, but the people that are trying to access that shopping center and combine that with the school that's at the southwest corner of the project site. I would just recommend that it go in now. As Councilmember August pointed out, that this signal will benefit the traffic circulation around the school, keeping traffic on the main roadway, keeping the traffic off Menifee Road, additional traffic off of Menifee Road that'll co-mingle with the school traffic.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. August?
Again, I want to chime in when Mr. Johnson said. I have no, I have no capacity. I don't have an education or a background to determine what this traffic is gonna look like coming in. But I do agree that, my own personal opinion would be to work traffic much around the city, getting to Highway 215 and the highway system, than to go through the center of the city. So I agree with Mr. Johnson, and I said, you know, Menifee Road, when Scott Road gets developed and Highway 74 works out, people will probably, if Menifee, if Newport Road becomes, you know, a serious gridlock situation, people will go around the city, and that would be my preference. And not everybody travels through the center of the city. And I hope that's what will eventually happen, but I have no idea knowing. So those are my comments.
Any additional questions of staff at this point? Mr. Edgerton, you're on the line still. Do you have, we're inside the rail. Do you have any questions at this point of staff?
Mr. Edgerton?
No, I don't, just to make a comment that, as I said before, the, all the commercial is welcomed there by most of the people in the neighborhood. There are some people who are not happy because of the density, et cetera. But a majority of the people want the convenience from the standpoint of the city, as a representative of the area, as the mayor knows, and as all council know, we're losing sales staff because we lack commercial. So, you know, we welcome that station on the corner. We welcome State of, we welcome Diamond Brothers. And of course, there is traffic, and that's what you want to mitigate. And in my 20 years, I've seen traffic signals, if they are properly synchronized, if they are properly planned, they mitigate traffic. And we've got children there on the corner of Menifee and Newport. And we've got a bunch of new cars that are gonna be coming in there. So I would be very concerned about anything that might slow down or interfere with this project that's now going in, the State of Brothers project, unless there was some overriding reason, which currently I can't see.
All right, thank you, sir, very much. Gentlemen, anything else at this point? Then we need to make a decision here. What is your pleasure on this matter before us tonight? Are we going to uphold the planning commission's approval, or are we going to go in a different direction? Mr. August?
Can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
It is a time for a make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. First of all, I'd like to commend the staff and the planning commission. I was very impressed with the work. I watched the workshop several times, and so that's the first thing I'd like to do. And second, I would like to make a motion, and I do appreciate the appellate for coming in and doing a fine job in representing your position, but I would like to make a motion to the council that we reject the appeal and adopt and approve all the council resolutions tonight, one at a time, 15-1415 through 15-419.
And Madam Clerk? Do we, are we required to take them all at one separately? Or can we take them on the aggregate?
I am now advised we can do a slate. If you would like to do those as a slate, you may.
Is that your motion, Mr. August, to approve all those resolutions as presented?
That's faster?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that, is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
There's a second by Mr. Lees Meyer. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
I will repeat that. We are discussing approval of all resolutions, adopting the mitigated negative declaration, the plot plan, the variance, the conditional use permit, and the tentative parcel map. So we're taking a vote on that motion. Are you ready, Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. On that motion, then, Councilmember Denver. Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Denver, thank you. Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you, Madam Reporter. Appreciate you being here for the record and getting it all down. Thank you, staff. Thank you, public. Thank you, appellate and applicant. We are now on to discussion items. Agenda item 12.1, announcement of appointments to the Planning Commission, Parks, Recreation and Trails Commission, and the Senior Advisory Committee. Madam Clerk, how should we proceed on this? Should we just go with the newest council member first?
I think that would be very appropriate, sir.
All right. Mr. Lees Meyer, you have the floor. Would you like to announce your appointment, sir?
Thank you, sir. As it was noted in the paper, we sent out applicants, we requested applicants to come forward. I did have a choice going into this, but my choice was reversed during the process. We found somebody, myself and Councilman Denver interviewed half a dozen or so applicants. And I have chosen a gentleman by the name of Greg Folsom. He is an economic development guy, and I value his knowledge with economics. And I believe as our development plan, development code is being drafted. It'll be valuable information to bring to the table as we move forward. So with that, it's again Greg Folsom.
Is he in the audience tonight?
I do not believe he is here tonight.
Then we'll catch and congratulate him later on.
With the Parks and Trails, Parks Recreation and Trails Commission, I am retaining Councilman Berman's choice of Tom Gudroyd. And with the Senior Advisory Committee, again, retaining Councilman Denver's, I'm sorry, Councilman Berman's choice of Victoria Herrendine. So that is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lees Meyer. Congratulations, Commissioner. Mayor Pro Tem Denver, since Mr. Lees Meyer got elected to the council, you have a vacancy to fill.
I do. Councilman Lees Meyer was an excellent planning commissioner. He really was, and we had a battle finding people who we wanted to, you know, finding people. And then when we got the list of people who applied, there were really some strong choices. We had some discussions. There were several good choices. And my only change was for that commission, and it's Robert Carwin.
Right. Commissioner Carwin, is he in the audience tonight?
No.
All right, very good. Robert Carwin and Greg Folsom. And you, your Parks, Recs and Trails and your senior advisory are not changing?
Correct.
All right, and just, I will state for the record, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, I've already made, you know, the announcement, but I'm making no changes in my appointment incident to my reelection. Commissioner Sobek is still on the Planning Commission. Commissioner Rosen is still on the Parks, Recs and Trails. And Ms. Gloria Sanchez is still on the Senior Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for your service and wanting to continue to serve in those capacities. Congratulations, gentlemen. Is there any other business on this agenda item? Hearing none. On to 12.2. There's a resolution, number 14-414. Now, is this 14, or is this about 15 also?
Yes, sir, it is also 15. Those are the, you found the three mistakes. We put them there on purpose.
Hey, you know, just keeping you honest. So we're going- So, we're going, is there a staff report on this, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Robert Lennox has your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll keep this very brief in the interest of time. This item is really a cleanup item. The original MCAC, Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee, was established at the time of incorporation to assist the city in various advisory capacities to the council. Sometime along the way, there was some other responsibilities that were assigned to the committee, and that is, this, this committee was not assigned by resolution at the time. And during that time, though, the council did enlist the assistance of the MCAC to provide some advisory and screening responsibilities relative to our CDBG, Public Service Subrecipient Application Process. Since then, every year, the MCAC has reviewed those applications, made recommendations to council, and then also heard reports from, from the preceding year on performance of those subrecipient grantees. This item is officially assigning the committee by resolution, and the structure of that committee would be a bit different than it has been in the past if approved by council. Staff is recommending through the resolution the appointment of eight members to the committee assigned by existing membership on city commissions and committees. And to be more specific, each committee or commission would assign or appoint two members from their bodies to serve on this on an annual basis. So, that would be two members from the Youth Advisory Committee, two members from the Senior Advisory Committee, two members from the Planning Commission, and two members from the Park, Recreation and Trails Commission. That really concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I just want to, I want to publicly comp, because I shared with you privately, Mr. Lennox, and both you, Mr. Johnson, that was a creative way to come up with this and keep it in play to provide a function. As you know, I've been on record several years now of not agreeing to have a Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee. No offense to Ms. Phoebe Irie, my, one of my original appointees, and a couple others in the audience, but I think it's a great creative way, and I'm going to support this resolution, to be sure. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to, to share and echo the comments that you just made, and Robert, Mr. Lennox is taking this and really making it very clear. I was the beneficiary of the MCAC as a, as a staff member back in 2009. So, to Mr. Rosen, Ms. Sanchez, Mr. Gidroyce, Mr. Cooper, and Ms. Irie, those folks came together and we did, we did some pretty fun stuff. We educated as much as we could. We talked about the census a lot. We worked on the Community Development Block Grant informational packets. And what you can see now is from that core group of people, you've been able to fill the other commissions and committees that you've had. And so, it's kind of a bittersweet that, that one kind of goes away, but, but the core group has an opportunity to stay. So, I really, I wanted to commend Robert for putting this plan together.
I do, can I ask a question? I do have a question. Actually, it's really more of a concern. What, what if there's a tie of the eight? What if it's a four-four vote on a CDBG recommendation as presented?
It, it would be presented to council that way, and council would essentially be that tiebreaker, but all testimony would be relayed to council if they understood the issue. One of the things I did want to highlight, obviously, there is the incorporation of the Youth Advisory Committee. That was absent from all prior review of CDBG subrecipient applications. We know that the applicant pool does lack that representation, and services for youth in the city are on the rise, or at least the demand for them are on the rise. And so, by having Yak members serve, we likely will see more, more applicants and more interest there.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, does the, is the role of the MCAC clearly defined? And I ask that because is it so that we can assign different tasks to them all the time? Or do we need to create an ordinance or create a part of our code that clearly defines what their job is? Or, explain to me again, you know, how that, how that works?
First of all, that's a great question. Secondly, it was never really clearly defined. So, I think what Mr. Lennox has done is put it into an, into a definable area of what their expertise is and what it should be, based on their community input and the, not only the various committees that they sit on have the opportunity to talk and represent the community in a variety of ways, but I'm going to pass it off to Robert, and he can kind of talk about what the function is, because it's actually in our consolidated annual, consolidated annual performance evaluation plan for CDBG. So, it has to be stated in a certain way.
That's correct. The requirement per our action plan through HUD does mandate us to stick with a body to review the application process. We identify that as the MCAC on the, from the onset when we, when we became an entitlement city in 2012. If we were to change that, we'd have to submit an amendment to HUD to do that. It takes quite some time to do. So, instead of reinventing, we kept the name and just looked at better diversifying that, the com, the composition of, of the MCAC itself. The function of them within the resolution as it's written now, or proposed right now, does clearly define their role relative to CDBG, but it also has language in there to leave it fairly flexible in case the council does want to assign additional duties as needed.
Excellent. Excellent. That was my question. I do want to pigeonhole them into doing one thing. I want to make sure that we have people that are able to do a lot of different things as, as our staff does. So, great. Thank you.
So, with that all being said, and the presentation from staff, is there a motion on the approval of this resolution for the formation of the new MCAC? Motion by Mr. Mayor Protem Denver. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leesmeyer on the second. Roll call vote, please.
On the roll call vote for the approval of Resolution 15-414, formation of the new Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. On to city attorney reports. Mr. Melching.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say that over the break, and you forwarded to me a piece of recently adopted legislation. It's Assembly Bill 1513, sort of as an FYI, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to update the council on this piece of legislation. I will say preliminarily, it has no particular application in Menifee at this point in time. AB 1513 is a pilot program that applies only in three cities in the state right now, the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale here in Southern California, and then Ukiah up in Mendocino County. And what it is, is it's a pilot program for, to get squatters on residential property off of the property on an expedited basis. Like a lot of pilot programs in the state, when they're put together, a lot of features or ornaments, if you are, are hung on these programs to see how they work, and this is that type of program. But in brief, what it, the way it works right now, or a way it's envisioned to work, is an entity can come in and file an affidavit with the local law enforcement agency that says, "I'm the owner of this property and nobody lives on that property." And then that person can also hire a security company to come by and check every 72 hours, has to be once every three days, to make sure that nobody's on the property. If somebody turns out to be on the property, the security company calls the law enforcement, the local law enforcement agency, and the local law enforcement agency goes out and verifies that somebody improperly is on the property, and they say, "Well, you need to get off the property." And if you don't, then the property owner can make a temporary restraining order application with the Superior Court. And then everything goes very quickly, seven days, soup to nuts. Two days to file the action, three days to hear the action, two more days to get the heck off the property. That's the way it works. And so, it creates this expedited process for removing someone from the property. It's a three-year pilot program, and so really, at this point in time, I think what I, my commitment to you is to keep an eye on it and get, get status updates as to whether it's working and whether there are features in that program that would make sense for this city.
Thank you. Mr. August?
Just a question to you, and it doesn't have anything to do with the pilot program, but in a squatter situation, somebody, does it have to be the, always the owner that you contact, or can it be a neighbor, homeowners association, or somebody?
The pilot, the pilot legislation as it's put together allows it to be the owner or the, an agent of an owner. And so, I can imagine having a neighbor or a homeowners association fill that role.
Under a power of attorney, perhaps?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Melching, for presenting that. It was, I know that that issue in our city is of a concern to several people, including us. And so, it looks like if there's any participation from us, it's going to be well beyond three years.
I, I would add that the pilot program is patterned after a program that already exists statewide, but only applies to mobile homes and manufactured homes.
Oh, that's interesting.
And so, there, there may be some limited application now in the city for that type of circumstance.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We all need to keep an eye on what they're passing up in Sacramento, right?
Yep.
For its applicability to us.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Melching. Mr. Johnson, city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have six items for you. Just as a reminder, the rural business workshop is coming up. We're finally nailing down a date. I believe we have one, and it is January.
Monday, January 26th at 6:00 p.m.
Monday 26th or 21st?
Monday, January 26th at 6:00 p.m.
There it is.
There it is.
So, we're going to start promoting that and make sure that we get the folks out in the community to come. Just a little side note, as you're aware, we started nine months ago with meetings with people in the rural business community and got a lot of feedback as staff, and drafted several different iterations of what we think as far as we can go legally. And the, the objective is to present staff's point of view, have the rural community business individual who's been helping them present their point of view, and then have some discussion, and then obviously, a direction by council to either send that to Planning Commission or, or what have you. So, we're pretty excited about that. The legacy workshop, oh, sorry, excuse me.
Just a quick, a quick question on it, Rob. What will the council have prior to the workshop on the 20? What will we have to work with? Have you, is there any draft ordinance, or is there any?
There will be a very lengthy PowerPoint and, and discussions on what we've talked about and where we've gone from our current situation that we have now, which is owner-occupied home-based businesses, to an opportunity to look at a rural-based business program. So, you'll have a lot of information. We'll have a good discussion, I hope, I believe, and then you'll hear from somebody who's representing the rural business community itself, and we'll have a little debate on how far we can go. And I, I think you'll see that the staff has worked, I don't want to say tirelessly, but yes, I do, on making sure that, that what we have can be applied to many different situations, yet is a standard format. And Mr. Leclaire has been grinding his teeth a little bit over the issue, but we'll get to discuss that at, at the workshop. But I, I'm hoping that you'll be pleased. I think we've done yeoman's work to acquire that information from, from the public, and we feel, we feel good about the direction we have. We're never going to agree 100%, right?
So, there'll be great wailing and gnashing of teeth.
There, there may be at some point. No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. Secondly, the, oh.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm very excited to hear this, because, you know, we, there is no one-size-fits-all for this, and I'm very curious to hear how you're going to do it, because, like I said, no two issues out there are alike.
You're exactly right. What we do want to offer the rural community is we're willing to talk to anybody at any time, all, all times of the day. So, what we've heard through some different channels is that folks are still concerned about coming to talk to us, and we, obviously, we want to stop that. So, we want to be available. We, we've held, again, over nine months, Gina ran away, 14 meetings, relatively speaking, at least eight with public representatives and six internally. So, it's not that we haven't thought about it and worked on it. The other one that we're finalizing to schedule is a legacy workshop that the mayor asked for. I'll be sending you information via email directly to each one of you. If you could just respond directly back to me, we won't have any issues on that, and we'll get that scheduled. There's been a lot of consternation over graffiti lately. I think our Public Works Department and PV Maintenance and our former contractor, who I must say publicly we can't find for the last 60 days, and then Valleywide through our contract with the parks, I think we've done, we've been doing an okay job keeping up with it. I'm concerned a little bit. I will be putting a little bit of a package together to bring back to council to share how I think we could be more efficient and effective with our graffiti removal. It may include internalizing that, at least with a staff member, to do nothing but run around and take care of graffiti, so we can do it quickly. Secondly, we did find a gem of a vehicle. As I was driving to work several times in, in November up Menifee Road near Garbony, South of Marjanian, there was a, it's a 450?
450.
It's a 2008 450. It's a flatbed. It's got stakes on the sides. It's got a, a rack on top. It, it had 8,000 miles on it, and we got it for $24,000.
So, is that your new graffiti mobile?
That is the objective. Second.
It has 8,000 miles, it's against 4 miles.
Well, we, what we found.
It's not a 6.0.
Correct. But what we found in our investigation of this vehicle, because I couldn't believe how nice it looked, is that the gentleman who was selling it is a contractor, and he worked for Camp Pendleton Base, and that thing went 12 miles a week. That's it, for five years. So, it has the original tires on it. It's a diesel. It, it's very clean. We checked it through our police department to make sure that it was straight up. And anyway, so, we've done that. And secondarily, we, we talked to the county, and we actually got a, a very large trailer for spraying and removal of graffiti for free. So, that's in our public works yard right now, and we're figuring out the particulars of, hey, we've got this money that we've set aside for this contractor to do this work, and he's gone. So, if he doesn't want the money and he's not going to do the work, we've got to figure it out. So, there's cost differentials and concerns with PV Maintenance and with Valleywide providing those services at a relatively very high cost, that since we have our own vehicle now and our own trailer, we just need some, maybe some, some painting mixing equipment, and we're looking at Lowe's to help us with some, some paint, and we're, we're going to bring that back to council. So, I just wanted to prepare you for that now. I save the best for last. I've got two, two more bits of information.
Don't forget to spread the wealth. We do have Dunn Edwards as well.
Down the road, new, down, down that way.
I, is it Dunn Edwards?
Is it Dunn Edwards? Sherman Williams?
Sherman Williams.
Okay.
I didn't want to correct you, but, but you reminded me that I forgot, so, thank you. Two new police deputies start tomorrow, so we have more resources starting tomorrow. Those are on patrol. As you've noticed, we have a second motorcycle officer, as I found yesterday, as I drove down Han, and he drove right up next to me and looked in my car, and I kind of freaked out.